Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 7th, regular school board meeting. The time is now 6:00 PM. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission as a community, we create supportive learning environments where all students thrive. Mr. Burgess, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Charlie? Here. Mr. Wade?
Here.
Colonel Foster?
Here.
Colonel Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Dulean?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you, the board has a quorum.
Thank you. Up next is our ESP of the Month. Joseph McGrady, University Park Elementary School Day Custodian will be recognized as the ESP of the Month for October 2025. Allison Nicholson, University Park Elementary School Principal. Brenna Kenneker, 3rd grade teacher. And student Asher Baxter will make the presentation.
Joseph, you want to join us, please? Good evening. Um, it's true, the adage that it said many times that children watch adults and notice things that we do as adults. And so, we're going to tell you a little story that started last year that has now come to fruition.
Last year around this time, my class was cleaning up from lunch when a student came up to me and shared this statement. "Mr. Joseph should be paid more." As I asked clarifying questions, this student shared all the ways he noticed Mr. Joseph working in the building. Soon, other students chimed in with their own observations. I was then asked, "What can we do about it?" This led to a meeting with our principal, who suggested inviting a school board member to visit our class. Mr. Doran kindly came and answered my students' "many" questions. He then suggested nominating Mr. Joseph for this award. Over lunch a few weeks later, my class brainstormed how to answer the nomination questions. Here to share them and present the award is the student who started it all with a simple statement, Asher Baxter.
Why do you think this person deserves this award? Mr. Joseph works so hard to keep our school clean and running well. He is diligent in fixing anything that may need to be fixed. He helps out kids out whenever they need to help, like in the hallways. He help always keeps our playground safe by making sure nothing is slippery or broken in the winter. He plows all of our sidewalks so everyone can get to school safely. He is kind to everyone in our school. How has this person made a difference in the district? With all the hard work Mr. Joseph does to keep our building running, we don't need to call on District Maintenance Department as often. Mr. Joseph also goes to other schools during the summer when they need extra help. If possible, give a specific example that illustrates how this person excels. He goes out of his way to do laundry for the for our nurse and intensive research classrooms. Even though it is not part of his job description, he is always willing to help out. When a student accidentally threw out their turn, Mr. Joseph took out every single trash bag from the dumpster and went through them all until he found it. How does this person be good role model? He is diligent in everything he does and models how to act in the hall halls. Being quiet and using walking feet, he shows us how to keep different parts of our school clean. He always has a kind word to say.
For all you do. Moving on into our adoption of the agenda with consent items. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member anytime prior to the start of the meeting. Excuse me. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda if an item is removed from the consent agenda. It shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. May I have a motion to approve the agenda with consent items?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Up next is public comments on reports and non-agenda items. During this section of the agenda, the school board welcomes public comments on non-agenda topics. This is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The board will note the topics, though no official actions will be taken. Topics may be referred to the administration for further research and future potential action. Board members will not respond to comments or questions made by the public. Concerned citizens should first discuss matters with the superintendent or designee. After the superintendent or designee has heard the concerns, they may be brought to the board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the district office to route concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at the time the item is introduced for action and/or discussion. Once the agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the school board office by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Students who have signed up in advance will be called upon first, followed by members of the public who have signed up in advance in the order in which they have signed up. If time remains, anyone else in person will be invited to testify until the one hour time limit has been reached. A signup sheet is available in the boardroom before the start of each meeting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and should provide their first name and spell their last. Are there any students who wish to testify at this time? Good evening, if you could state your name, spell your last name?
Uh, my name is Chee Lill and my last name is Alexander, A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R.
Thank you, you have three minutes.
Uh, I'm an 8th grade student at Tannenau Middle School. I'm here to testify about the middle school sports, particularly the basketball season. I know everyone of you are very busy and the sports season are definitely not your top priority, but I would like to say that the basketball season is too short for middle school basketball. Our middle school seasons are the building blocks of high school basketball, and basketball teaches us teamwork, communication, organization, commitment to excellence, and commitment to excellence. We only have six to seven practices and six to eight games. Our season is only four weeks long, and the boys' season is six to five weeks long. First of all, that's definitely unfair and, um, wait, it turned off. And the, and it's unfair for the girls having a week less of basketball, but also for the boys not having a full season either. Please extend our basketball season. Another reason a longer basketball season is important is there are are kids who can't do IYB, interior youth basketball, or comp and, and other basketball opportunities due to the cost. While you still have to pay for jerseys, if you turn them in at the end of the year, you can get your money back. Thank you for your time, Masiecho. Now, if you'll excuse me, I have to go to my sister's basketball season, but I have basketball.
Thank you for your testimony. Up on our signup list, number, uh, the first person up will be Ms. Dinette Peterson.
Thank you, Dinette Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N, on the west side of Fairbanks. Tonight, I appear before you wearing two different hats, that of an FEA president and that of a parent of a Spud student in our district. I'm here to ask you to give careful consideration to the creation of a school board special education committee. I recently learned that a special education committee existed not that long ago, and I believe it's time once again to create a school board committee to address the unique needs that are faced by our students, staff, and families. Here are four truths that support the formation of this committee. Compliance, staffing, liability, funding. Compliance. Special education certified and classified positions are deemed hard to fill by this district, and those positions often go unfilled for entire school years, leaving rooms chronically short-staffed and at times out of compliance with staff to student ratios. For the past three years, as a parent, I have seen these shortages impact my own son's ability to fully integrate into regular classrooms. Staffing. Over the past few years in this role, I have seen our homegrown special education educators leave our district, our state, and at times this profession due to the ever-increasing workload, demands, and injuries. Our international educators fill many of our education certified positions, and the ability to recruit and retain these educators in light of federal restrictions and recent visa fees seems less certain than ever. Liability. Looking at the risk reports at the borough level, it is clear that educators are being injured and that there is a need for additional services to support students to reduce potential liabilities and to provide students with what they need. Funding. Given attempts to defund the Department of Education at the federal level and that our current state funding for special education students underestimates the number of students receiving additional supports, leaving a deficit for the school board and borough, to borough assembly to backfill. For these reasons and more, I urge you to create a special education committee headed by this school board to address these concerns. I hope that those in our classrooms and community who support the creation of such a committee will join me and share an email with you and state their support for this committee. We have some educators in this room and others online that are listening, um, and I hope that you hear their voices. And I hope that this committee is guided by your leadership to address these concerns and to hear the voices of students, parents, educators, and community members so that we can take a valuable step forward.
Thank you for your testimony. So we'll have Corwin Bassett. Good evening, Mr. Bassett. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Corwin Bassett. My last name is Bassett, B-A-S-S-E-T-T. I live here in Fairbanks in Hamilton Acres. Um, I have two kids enrolled in the Fairbanks North Star Borough, North Star Borough District. Um, I'm a journeyman high-voltage power lineman and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Business Representative here at the Union Hall. Um, I'm here to discuss a problem, but I don't believe in bringing forth problems without solutions. Um, the problem is the custodial positions being outsourced. I don't believe by any means that anybody wanted to make that cut. However, it happened, and here we are, and there are significant rippling effects in our community. We now have limited access to gym facilities due to lack of staffing in the evenings at the schools. I have two children that play competitive soccer for the Eclipse Soccer Club. This year, our players' fees went up $300 per child. That does not include jerseys, kits, tournament fees, and any other events we choose to participate in. That is a large increase, especially for single-income families compounded by multiple kids. Last year, billing rental fees were $8,000 for Eclipse. This year, it's projected to be $24,000. Paying to use UAF gym space is costing us $13,000. That $13,000 should go back into our school system. That is just the money from the Eclipse organization, not the other organizations that are using these facilities. I understand that there are costs associated with youth sports, but paying so much to use gym space facilities that we are already paying for, such as our public school gyms, just doesn't make any sense. Then there's the issue of the school gyms we don't have access to at all. Um, we should have nearly unlimited access to these facilities. The gym space is being competed for by the Eclipse Soccer Club, Fairbanks Youth Soccer Association, Fairbanks Volleyball Association, Interior Youth Basketball, Comp Basketball, as well as the, the, the school teams that are inhabiting those presently. And I'm sure there's more that I'm unaware of. The Fairbanks Volleyball Association has reduced gym time and completely lost a day to one of the youth sports organizations. I do agree that youth sports should take a precedent, but it's still unfortunate that that happened. Um, my proposed immediate solutions are for the schools to give keys to the youth sports organizations for accessing the gyms if no custodial, no custodial staff is available to let us in. If custodial staff is not available, the youth sports organizations' parents can shoulder the cleanup necessary after practices and games. Youth sports are an important aspect of childhood development. The social aspect of team building, teaching children to be coachable, how to win and lose, and get backed up after a loss. These skills are invaluable. You guys can handle these problems almost immediately with a couple phone calls. Pretty simple solution, I believe. I'm asking what I can do to help the school board, to help our youth athletes, and I'm asking if the school board is willing to do, willing to come together and do what is necessary to make this work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett, for your testimony. Um, would you please email that to the school board? Thank you. Schoolboard@K12NorthStar.org. Up next, we will have Kel Gitter. Good evening, Mr. Gitter. If you could please state your name, spell your last, you will have three minutes.
Sure, my name is Kel Gitter. Uh, my last name is spelled G-I-T-T-E-R, and I live in the city of Fairbanks. Live in the city of Fairbanks. Um, alright. I wanted to come today to share my personal story about the incredible caliber of staff at University Park, where my five-year-old son Desi is in kindergarten. Um, I promise I had no idea that a lot of them would be here today. It's just, it's just very convenient. My family and I have been fortunate to be part of the University Park community for the past two years as Desi has participated in the Heart of Hearing pre-K program at the school. Desi was born with microsia, a birth defect that affects his outer ear, and as a result, has hearing loss in his right ear. Um, he uses a bone conduction hearing aid called a Baja. The Baja is, uh, the size of a quarter that clips onto a headband that he wears. He is not wearing it right now because he didn't want to. So, keep in mind, quarter. Um, this year, Desi started kindergarten and was excited to join the after-school running club. During pickup and about the second week of club, I noticed Desi's Baja was detached from his headband, and he had no idea where it was. All the other students had already been picked up, but Coach Annie Crinzer volunteered to help us search for the Baja on the running trail. She ran the entire trail looking for something the size of a quarter, while Desi and I walked around the soccer field, knowing we'd unlikely find it. I texted my friend and an employee of U Park, Annie Titus. Uh, she's the primary intensive resource teacher about the incident, and she immediately messaged Jessica Schultz, the speech-language pathologist who'd been working with Desi, and she emailed the entire staff to be on the lookout, letting them know that this hearing aid, the size of a quarter, was missing. Mrs. Titus also had the entire morning group of staff kids help with the search. In a surprising turn of events, within an hour of dropping Desi out for school the next day, Mrs. Titus texted me to say they found it. Becky Engman, Desi's kindergarten aide, had seen the email and decided to come in early to help the search because he was one of her students. Within five minutes, Miss Engman found the Baja in the soccer field. I am in shock that that hearing aid was found, but what I'm not surprised is, is the absolute incredible support and sense of community at University Park. The level of care and concern for Desi and our family is felt at every level. I just wanted to say thank you to Annie Crinzer, Annie Titus, Jessica Schultz, Becky Engman, um, Desi's kindergarten teacher, Mrs. R., and principal Allison Nicholson for the heart and soul they pour into that school every day. That's all I got.
Thank you for your testimony. And a big hi to Desi. Up next, we'll have Ms. Janet Ferris. Hello, Ms. Ferris. If you could state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Janet Ferris, F-A-R-R-I-S. I reside in North Pole, Alaska, in case you didn't know. Um, I am the Fort Wainwright School Liaison Officer. It is that time of year again, school board. The Purple Star School designation applications are open for schools to be considered for the initial award or for the renewal award. As a reminder, the Purple Star School Designation Award recognizes those schools who are committed to providing a welcoming atmosphere for our military-connected students. Why is this important? The average amount of moves for a military-connected student is every two years. By the time the student is, is in high school, that could be as many as 10 moves. This impacts the well-being of these students. Because of this, families do investigate school websites before moving to see if the Purple Star School emblem is present on that website. The emblem provides comfort to these families, knowing that the school understands the unique lifestyle of these military-connected students and welcomes them with open arms. As of today, this school district continues to have the most schools to have the Purple Star Award in Alaska, but the school district does not have 100% of their schools with this distinction. My hope is that we, as partners, can have every school as a Purple Star School in our school district. Please go to Alaska Purple Star Designation website to view schools that have this distinction and to locate the initial and the renewal applications. With that being said, I als, also, I would like to take a minute to present to you a committee that I am a member of. The Purple Star USA National Convening of Schools and Communities. This committee represents seven states that organizes and provides workshops for all of the nation's schools, organizations, and anyone associated with military-connected students. These workshops is held in, for one day in October. This workshop this year is on October 28th. It is all online. Many presenters will be available to provide information that could benefit not only military students, but all students in these families. These workshops provide emotional, academic, social well-being, et cetera, for these students and actually for all students and families. I, yeah.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Ferris.
Here's the flyer that you have. I hope you join the workshops.
We've got it, thank you. Up next, we will have Ms. Adia Cotter. Good evening, Ms. Cotter. Nice to see you. If you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes.
Adia Cotter, last name is C-O-T-T-E-R, and I live in the McGrath area. Um, in honor of our civic duty today, I thought that I would share something, uh, recently happening in our schools that supports the very important job that we all have, uh, to do today. Um, a couple of weeks ago, my 8th grader, who also attends Tannenau Middle School, came home and started quizzing me about student government and the, the function of student government and what it was for. I had to look it up because I never myself was involved in student government. Um, so, we talked about what government is and why schools need student input and how students can affect change at their schools. Um, apparently, there was an election, and one of the people, um, one of the students running for president had made a campaign promise that they were going to unblock Spotify. Very hot topic. And so, my son asked, "Can they even do that?" And I said, "Hmm, I don't know. I'd have to look it up on your, on the, uh, school policies, but probably not because it needs to have a filter and, you know, it needs to protect students." And he said, "Well, why would someone make a promise like that?" And I said, "Ooh, good question, right? Critical thinking here." Um, so, we talked about campaign promises and getting people to vote for you and campaigning and, um, you know, the different ways that these elections pan out. Um, and it was a great way to talk about civics with my 8th grader, who doesn't talk about these kinds of things. Um, this past weekend, we had a whole, long conversation about the local election. He had participated in Kids Vote in, uh, school, and so, he wanted me to sit down and watch all the candidate forums with him and talk about it. And I said, "Eh, we, we probably don't need to do that, but we can look at the, the voter guide." And so, we looked at the voter guide, um, way too many words in there for kids, and talked about the difference between federal government and local government, um, and the importance of voting. And he said, "Well, it doesn't matter, one vote doesn't matter, right?" And I said, "Wow, is this an after-school special I'm in? That, that's, how do I answer this question?" So, we talked about that, yes, one vote, one voice does matter, one vote does matter. And we talked about real-world examples. So, I am very, very pleased that this all came, uh, as a result of an activity that was supported in our local neighborhood school that was not mandated by the state. It was not tested. It was something that the school thought was important and elected to do and have a discussion about and offer to the students. I also don't want to lose sight of the fact that there are educators involved in this, and it's extra workload for them, and so, um, thank you to them, and this is important, uh, to all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We have reached the end of our pre-signups, um, but we have two more who signed up here in the boardroom. Uh, first, we will have Ms. Gail McBride. Good evening, Ms. McBride. If you could state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Is this on? Okay. Gail McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E. I'm with Moms for Liberty. And I would like to thank you for conforming to the requirements of the DHHS letter by removing gender ideology from our sex education and returning the curriculum to fact-based education. This is a beginning. If this ideology is not allowed to be taught to high schoolers, then it only seems logical it not be in elementary schools. There are at least 58 elementary library books under the subject of gender and 118 in our junior high and high schools that I could identify. And I don't know how many are in the classrooms. This material all needs to be removed from our children's schools. This ideology is not factual. It is unscientific and poisonous to children. The children in our schools are other people's children. If parents wanted their children exposed to this non-academic ideology, they would provide it. Words must reflect reality. Confusing children to this most basic of realities, whether they are a boy or a girl, is distorting reality in young children. This is not educational. It is undermining their very sense of reality. It is ideology that is damaging children in its wake. The evidence of this damage is in lives is becoming more and more public as these damaged young people bring their tragic stories to light. How many will our schools be responsible for? Each of you are accountable for everything you allow these children to be exposed to, even though you are not the ones responsible for placing it there. No one seems to be responsible for that, not the library department, not the curriculum department, not the superintendent's office. But you are the ones currently who can do something about it. Parents want their children educated, not confused, as teachers use incorrect pronouns and announce their perceived sexuality. Even children in elementary school are being confused about who is a boy and who is a girl. This is an environment where children do not feel secure. Please remove all of this damaging material promoting gender ideology from our children's schools. This is a quote from financial reports about Netflix, a recent one. "Is $25 billion sufficient penalty for promoting transgender ideology to children? This is how much they have lost in recent weeks for promoting this ideology to children. Parents want it to stop." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have Ms. Jeanie Olson. Good evening, Ms. Olson, and thank you for being here. If you could state your names, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Jeanie Olson, O-L-S-O-N. I'm here to testify on what's kind of a timely thing because the award went to a custodian tonight and that's what I'm to testify about tonight. I remember this spring when you discussed privatizing it and that was a tough one. It was probably low-hanging fruit, but it also came with unintended consequences as Corwin Bassett mentioned, but also other things. I have a client who has a friend that was a custodian for the school district, then got hired by the contractor and then was laid off, and now he works for Walmart. And, you know, those things can happen, I get it, but I remember my janitor in high school and he was my buddy, you know, and he was a lot of people's buddies, exactly what happened here with the testimony. And so, the unintended consequences with the sports, I don't quite understand all the details, but I agree. When I played sports in high school, our coach made sure we left the locker room clean and we put the basketballs away and if there was a mess, we didn't leave practice until it was cleaned up. And I see that even in the villages when I go. The gyms are open to the community all the time. It's a way to just interact and have a good social time. So, I think that the parents and the coaches can instill that discipline in the kids. And I don't see why a custodian needs to be there. I really think somehow we reach out and start becoming more efficient at how we can use these buildings after school for the kids. There's more than just the tangible ABCs of learning. Sports and other extracurricular activities after school are super essential. We just need to figure out how to do it in a cost-effective way. That's it.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Olson. The end of all of our signups. Is there anybody else in the room who wishes to testify at this time? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. We will move on to our Borough Assembly Report. Scott Crass, Borough Assembly Member, will be providing tonight's report. Welcome, Mr. Crass. How are you?
Do I press this? I'm well. Let me pull up some notes here. I can tell you what we've been up to. So, the last regular assembly meeting was September 25th and we did not have a broad amount of items on our agenda, but we did have some depth to the two resolutions that came before us. We adopted our legislative priorities. And rather than going through all of those for you, I think I'll stick to the ones I think are germane to the school board. The first one on our list is the PERS contribution rate and retention strategies. So, we looked at, you know, asking the legislature to move back to a defined benefit system, but still maintain that 22% PERS contribution rate or less as agreed to by the PERS employers. So, making sure that we can afford to pay our employees and still provide the ability to retire with dignity. So, focusing on liability reduction while also and being able to fund a defined benefit. So, we feel that's a priority that we want to advocate for in the legislature and see that move forward. And I know those discussions are ongoing. So, we're hopeful that's something our lobbyists can help roll the boulder on. And then, the kind of important piece for here, the State of Alaska should alter the funding formula to incentivize economic development and continue to increase the base student allocation. So, we broke this into two parts. After the school funding formula, we wanted to alter the school funding formula to ensure that as the community grows, the state doesn't reduce the amount of funding a local school district receives. So, kind of looking at that, the local contribution piece and the way that slowly winnowed down the state contribution to our funding of education here locally. And then, the second part, we asked that they permanently increase the base student allocation to at least 7,768 and incorporate an inflation adjustment mechanism into the funding formula to ensure long-term sustainability and alignment with the rising costs of education. You know, I'm hopeful that we can find our way out of having this fight every year. I think we're all pretty tired of it at this point. Beyond that, we supported the natural gas pipeline to Fairbanks. And we also looked at school bond debt reimbursement. In accordance to longstanding commitments made by the legislature, the state should return to paying its full share of school bond debt taken out. There was promise to, the state would pay its share. And then, beyond that, there were a number of other things. One other piece at the very end, and I don't have a tremendous understanding of this, unfortunately, I'm filling in for Liz Reeves-Romos who has a better understanding of this, but was to reestablish and implement an external local citizen review panel for permanency planning as it was enacted in Chapter 117 S.L.A. 1990. So, this is a citizens oversight panel for OCS and for Children's Services. And so, there was a desire to increase the amount of public oversight for those cases. And so, we're going to advocate for that from the borough. And that resolution, and then we also passed a resolution urging our congressional delegation to advocate for the release of Achary Bundao. And that passed 7-2 and she has since been released, so I'm happy to share that. And that was our meeting, our regular assembly meeting. And then, we had our committee of the whole meeting last week, last Thursday. And at that meeting, we kind of began the KIP process and there's been some adjustments made and appreciate the input from the administration. There's a lot more sort of bite-sized pieces for the assembly to chew on. Before, there were some really large projects and those have been broken out into pieces I think that we're able to wrap our heads around. So, and kind of effect some change in a positive way and be a little bit more proactive with maintenance of our school buildings. And that's what we've been up to. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Crass, for your report. I will turn it over to the board. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I have two questions for you. You mentioned liability reduction and I was curious if the borough has made any cuts in any positions yet.
It's liability, that was in reference to a defined benefit system, not necessarily liability as it pertains to more or less employees. It's whether or not they have a defined benefit system in place and whether we have to continue to fund pension program.
Okay. So, aside from that, though, have you guys cut any positions over there yet? I mean, I'm just looking at our budget that we have and I know that we cut people every single year. We cut positions, we cut teaching positions, we cut everything. And I'm just curious if you guys have done that because the last time we asked, I think the answer was sort of a circular no.
We have not cut any positions since our last budget process, no.
Okay. My second question for you is, last night, we had a work session and the APC from Pearl Creek Charter reported that they are working with the borough on a lease agreement for their proposed school location. And I was curious if you have any information or if you could speak to that.
You know, I listened to that meeting. That was fascinating. I think that group gave a tremendous presentation. You guys asked some really penetrating questions there. That was extremely engaged, fascinating to watch from the sidelines. You'd have to speak to the administration. I would talk to the mayor's office about any negotiations on the use of that building. We haven't seen anything, nothing's been brought before the assembly.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Crass.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your meeting and congratulations on a racehorse run.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we will go into our advisory members' reports and comments. Mr. Wade.
Good evening. So, on top of serving on this board as a student representative, I also serve as a student representative for the Kids Voting North Alaska. So, as many of you know, and it was brought up in public testimony earlier, we had a chance for a multitude of our schools to take part in our essential voting process. And we saw tremendous success from what I've seen in the numbers that I've been shown so far. I want to thank all the educators who took part in it across the district and definitely if you get a chance to ask your student about it. I've heard amazing things from my own peers out of North Pole. I'm super excited to hear more coming from it. Currently, I'm working with student leaders from across the district on youth representation and local politics, something that we're seeing coming up more and more in student government and youth politics is that kids want a voice in these things and they want representation in a way that is meaningful to them and isn't just something that they feel is heard and goes directly out the other ear. So, we're working with legislators to talk about what that looks like within youth politics. Additionally, I'm increasing outreach for these meetings to my peers through various different methods. I would love every single one of these seats to be filled with a student from across the district. I know that that might likely never come, but every single day, if I see at least one more kid in the crowd, I'm proud. I'm happy to be sitting on this board where I can say that I'm representing a student voice and each one of these kids gets to represent their own voice. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. You know what? I hope to one day see that happen, truly. I would love to see a kid in every seat here at our meeting, so I hope you get to see that while you're on the board. Any questions for Mr. Wade? Seeing none, we will move to Ms. Charlie. Anything tonight, Ms. Charlie?
So, I just wanted to announce a new award that our JOM program at FNA was awarded just in the past week through the Indian Education Demonstration Grant for Native Youth Community Programs. So, our JOM program was awarded a five-year grant to fund two staff to implement youth leadership, cultural and career and college readiness activities in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District. And this, our first year award amount was $481,500. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank our JOM program and director and staff. They have been really busy since school started, but I just really wanted to highlight that they have been providing 200 students with winter gear vouchers at Beaver Sports, 200 vouchers for student activities. And also, what I wanted to acknowledge and thank them for is that they paid about $56,000 in school fees for all secondary schools for native students, so these kids could now go to prom or travel or play sports. And on top of that, they've been purchasing cultural supplies and working with seniors to help them make cultural regalia for their, for the graduating seniors this year. So, also, they've been providing laptops to families that need it. There was about 200 families that signed up for that. So, I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for all of the support that they've been giving to our kids in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Charlie. Any questions for Ms. Charlie? Mr. Dorn?
Not actually a question, but some feedback from the field on the JOM program and tutors. It's wonderful. I've worked with them over the years and walk into school and be greeted by some of the member JOM staff. But this past week, I was at a school that for the first time has JOM tutors. And when I asked the secretaries, I was waiting for the principal and I usually always ask, "Give me three brags about your school." So, I asked the secretaries, "Give me three brags about the school." And one of those was having JOM there. And when I did get chatting with the principal, I said, "Don't give me a brags." Among those that was there and I got introduced, but that impact. So, really want to say thank you for all the JOM staff and all the support that they get from your organization to be working in our schools and the impact they do have.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Anything? Go ahead, Ms. Charlie.
Just to follow up. So, we do have a lot of advocates and tutors in the school, in all the schools this year. It's more JOM staff than we've had in a long time. And I don't know the exact number, but I want to say we're probably over 15 right now. So, thank you.
Anything further for Ms. Charlie? Seeing nothing. Thank you, Ms. Charlie, for your report tonight. Going down to the other side of the dais, Colonel Foster.
Caught me off guard there. Just one thing, I just wanted to flag for everyone's attention is the government shutdown that's ongoing right now. So, we have a lot, number of civilians that are furloughed on Iowson and I'm sure Colonel Campbell will probably echo that same sentiment. But as we get closer to the 15th of October, which is the military, typically that's our payday for the military and if the budget is not passed, there's going to be some significant stressors on some of our active-duty military members. So, there's a trickle-down effect that will, you'll see that stress possibly make its presence known probably in schools. So, there might be some folks that are stressed out a little bit. So, that's just one of the things that we're working and looking at at Iowson. And we're starting to put out feelers and get a sensing of what we can do to try to offset and assist our members with some of these stressors. So, just wanted to flag that for everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Foster. Any questions for Colonel Foster? Seeing none, Colonel Campbell.
Thank you. First, I want to start off and just say, Liam, appreciate your leadership. That was your investment in your peers, your support and it's peer leadership is hardest leadership and that was inspirational, so thank you. And to echo what Colonel Foster said there, on Fort Wayne, much like with his team, we're continuing to support life, health, safety operations. What does that mean for the community? We're still continuing with gate access security measures. We're still providing those, the- We're still providing those, the police, fire department, all those life, health, safety requirements. So, should be no concerns with that. We're still supporting our school on post and we're continuing to have open communication with the school district as well as the community. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands those requirements on the installation. And then, I do want to say thank you to our Fairbanks Borough community for the support to our families as we're looking forward and trying to set conditions, potential conditions. So, we continue to train, continue to meet our mission. But just wanted to reassure everybody, life, health, safety, we're continuing to press forward with that and echo exactly what was said there. Just looking forward for our team, I know as we work towards February, JP MRC, the snow comes, you're going to see us out doing a lot of additional training. And a lot of units are ready for that snow to get here so they can get out in the woodline and get after it. So, you'll start to see that on top of all the other things that are going on. So, we're continuing to look forward to that snow, at least we are. Because that means we can get out and start getting ready for JP MRC. So, thank you for the time and always appreciate the team here.
Questions for Colonel Campbell? Mr. Dorn?
Hey, sorry, not another question, but passing on compliments to both military installations. I was on both, the post and the base this week. And I want to tell you that going through the visitor's center, getting my pass, et cetera, was a delight. The real kudos to the crews at the front there, very, very positive, not only dealing with me, but watching them as they dealt with others and with each other. But tremendous job, they represented both your installations well.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Yeah, I'd like to, to both Colonels, thank you for your care for your families during this time, also affected by the government shutdown. My husband is a civilian DOD employee. So, my thoughts and wishes are out to those families and thank you for just paying attention to this situation, so. Anything further for our Colonels? Seeing nothing? All right, we will move on. Do any Board members have committee reports to share? Ms. Julian?
Thank you. I just want to say that our first committee of the budget will be this Thursday here in the Boardroom. So, if you're on that committee or if you'd like to tune in, those are open and welcome and it's a fabulous way to learn a little bit more about the budget process, our reserves, and prepare for the upcoming budget season, which will start in January.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Anything further from Board members? Mr. Burgess?
Thanks. The Curriculum Committee was scheduled to meet on October 2nd, but that ended up getting canceled because of a lack of a quorum. Fortunately, it was a very light agenda and there will be more to talk about at the meeting that is scheduled for, I believe, November 22nd. Just double-check that date real quick. No, it will be November, mm-hmm, sorry, the 22nd is Saturday, it's definitely not that. So, it's the November 20th, I believe, is the next Curriculum Committee meeting. And at that meeting, I will no longer be Chair, because I will be termed out of the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, but the topics under discussion will be the second draft of the Social Studies curriculum as well as some first drafts of a couple of other things. But the big one is the Social Studies curriculum, so. Yep, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Anything further from Board members on committees? Seeing nothing at this time, we will take a brief 10-minute recess. Thank you. All right, we are back from recess and we'll jump back into our agenda moving into the President's Report. So, give me one second here. All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by congratulating the Lathrop Malamutes on their big Dog Bowl victory over the Wolf Pack. It was an incredible game and a great showcase of Fairbanks football spirit. An extra shout-out tonight to one very special athlete as well. The only young woman in 24 years to play football for Lathrop. She's a returning four-year player and a senior. During the Dog Bowl, she scored a two-point conversion and it was an incredible moment. I don't know if her celebration was more exciting or Coach Baylish's. I mean, it was, they were both pretty up there. It was just fantastic. I'm so proud to be able to celebrate her tonight at this meeting. And big props to Coach Baylish. Apparently, he pulled off this trick play that he's had in his pocket now for a little bit, so kudos, Coach Baylish. I'm glad you got to get that trick play off and congratulations to Lily. There are also some great opportunities coming up for our students. West Valley's Model UN will be hosting a Halloween carnival on October 18th. It goes from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There'll be games, prizes, candy, cookie decorating station, food, and even a haunted hallway. A great community event for families all around the district. A reminder that music in our Schools Month t-shirt design contest entries are due tomorrow. I'm really excited to see this year's creative designs from our talented students. And these will be posted everywhere. It'll go on concerts and t-shirts and it'll be really cool. I was recently contacted by Golden Heart Post 3629 about a wonderful opportunity for high school students. The Voice of Democracy Audio Essay Competition hosted by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. This year's theme is how are you showing patriotism in support for our country? And the National Grand Prize is a $35,000 scholarship. Entries are due October 24th and it's open to all students in grades nine through 12. This program has been inspiring young voices since 1947, encouraging students to share what patriotism means to them in their own words and voices. I have asked Administration to get this information out to our schools and to our students and I encourage anyone interested to submit an entry. As we move into winter sports season, a quick reminder for all high school student athletes. You'll need your golden ticket before participating in tryouts or practices, and I know those tryouts are coming up quick. Players must receive their golden ticket from their school office. For example, at West Valley, those are distributed directly through the office. Without it, players will not be allowed to try out or participate in any winter sports and that goes district-wide. To get the ticket, make sure you're set up on current and big teams, up to date on all fees for your sports and school, and have a valid physical. For homeschool students, any required participation fees must be paid. If you missed your school's golden ticket event, it's okay. You can contact your school's Activities Office to get everything squared away before tryouts begin. Lastly, just a quick reminder for the Voice of Democracy Audio Essay. I am super stoked for this for our students and I hope that we'll see a lot of entries. I look forward to being able to keep celebrating the incredible things that are happening across our schools, from athletics to academics and everything in between. And I hope that we can continue cheering on our students, staff and community for all they do to make our district shine. If there are no questions, I'll turn it over to Dr. Minor for his superintendent report.
All right, thank you, President Burnett. I'm going to start out with a couple unplanned topics that came up either during testimony or some comments here from the dais. And so, just wanted to piggyback on the Colonel's comments in terms of the federal government shutdown. Our thoughts are with everybody that continue to serve, you know, during this process. The district sent out some communications to families earlier in the week in terms of supports available. And so, just wanted to make sure if families are listening, if you hit that October 15th deadline or you're experiencing some challenges, the district is here to support you, whether that be winter gear, school supplies, or some connections to other local community partners. We want to partner with you throughout this process. And so, Brianna Gray, our Executive Director of Student Support Services is a direct contact for that, but you can also work through your school office and we'll help support you through this time. I'd like to thank the Borough Assembly for their support to the district through their legislative priorities. Thank you, Mr. Dorn, for being there to express some of the priorities from the school district. I think it's been a great partnership, not only with the legislative priorities, but this change with the capital improvement program. The district administration had the opportunity here recently to discuss our capital improvement priorities for, in front of the Borough Assembly, and that's a great change. I think the dialogue back and forth between the Borough and the district is strengthening that process and really ensuring that the Assembly understands some of the challenges that we're facing within our Borough buildings and how they can help best, help with that situation. So, thank you to the Assembly for that change. It's been much appreciated, appreciated. Ms. Charlie, thank you for your amazing leadership at FNA. As I go around the schools, JOM tutors and other staff that you have in schools play a significant part in the success of our students. And then, it was great to hear about all of the kind of external supports your organization is providing our students to ensure they have what they need to succeed. So, thank you very much. Just a reminder, there's about 50 minutes left before the polls close, so if you haven't gotten out to vote, you should get out to vote, especially for School Board. We have some amazing candidates running and just want to say thank you to all of the municipal candidates that decided to run and are willing to sacrifice their time in service for being on our Board and the Assembly. It's amazing, given all the challenges that we continue to face as a community and a school district, that people are willing to step up into these positions. And I just thank each and every one of you for doing so, because leadership matters and I think we have great candidates running for all of our positions. A little kudos for our School Board here. The Alaska Association of School Board Association tracks. Each School Board member's participation and professional learning opportunities throughout the year, and this is statewide. Board members get points for participating Uh, board members get points for participating in trainings, conferences, workshops, um, and academies. And so, while you see our board up here on a regular basis doing work, they're also busy behind the scenes, um, bettering themselves through professional development. And our, uh, board members do a tremendous job with that. Uh, and so just wanted to recognize, uh, we have two board members at the master's level, which is, uh, the highest level you can achieve through AASB. And that's Mr. Tim Doran and Melissa Burnett. Uh, we have uh, one board member at the experienced level, that's Bobby Burgess. And then, uh, I feel like they need a better term for this because you have to work for it, but at the basic level, uh, Meredith Maple. And they don't just, they don't just hand out basic, like you do have to work for it. Um, so maybe, uh, Mr. Doran can work on the naming clocher for that. But, uh, in all seriousness, um, you, you do put in a lot of service and sacrifice, not only on the board, but outside to ensure uh, that you're prepared for the work. And so, uh, congratulations for moving up into those ranks and thanks for all that you do. Want to announce, uh, the Annual College and Career Fair will be held Friday, October 16th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the University of Alaska Fairbanks Wood Center. Uh, this event provides an outstanding opportunity for our high school students to connect with colleague, or colleges and universities, local labor representatives, military recruiters, and regional employers as they explore post-secondary and career pathways. Um, and I'd like to extend a sincere appreciation to Tara Devon on our side, uh, who does all of the planning for that and then UAF, uh, for their willingness to host that event at the Wood Center. Um, it's great to see, um, our students up there and connecting, uh, with people that can make a difference, uh, once they leave, um, our high school halls. Uh, congratulations to a recent Lathrop graduate, Ruby Tienzie, who is named as a 2025 U.S. Presidential Scholar. Uh, huge award, huge recognition. Um, she's won a three Alaskans awarded and only like 160 nationwide. Um, and she's awarded this prestigious honor for her accomplishments and, uh, academics, the arts, and career in technical education. And also a huge thank you to Mr. Ben Shoff, who submitted the application. And so, uh, great staff over there supporting our students and congratulations with Ruby. Uh, working, we're working on scheduling an upcoming podcast to dig in to how she, uh, received this award and, uh, what she's doing next. So, um, very excited for that upcoming conversation. I want to congratulate the West Valley Girls Cross Country Team for placing third as a team in the state competition this past weekend. And then a special congratulations to Maryam Armstrong, who led that team with a fourth place finish. So, uh, a great showing. Um, if you've never seen the state cross-country meet, it is incredibly intense. Uh, you can go back and watch videos, but that start, uh, the starting line is always amazing how many students uh, are leaving that starting line and then, uh, running that 3.1 mile race. Uh, flag football, North Pole qualified for state in flag football. Uh, and their first game will be October 9th at 1:00 p.m. against Service. You can catch that off on the NFHS Network if you're not attending in per, in person. Uh, and then we had 16 tennis players from around the district, uh, that have qualified, uh, for state and they're headed down there this week for tennis state. And then lastly, football, uh, good luck to Lathrop and West Valley. They both have games, uh, this week and they've made it to the top four. And so, we're hopeful that they both win and uh, see each other in the championship for, uh, entire, uh, Fairbanks, uh, state championship. That would be fun. And then lastly, uh, wanted to announce, uh, we sent out some information this week on district pillar teams in conjunction, uh, with our strategic plan. Uh, we're launching pillar teams for the pillar of supporting access and choice. Uh, one for elementary, one for focusing on elementary, and one for secondary. Uh, these advisory groups will provide input and feedback on key initiatives, helping our leadership team, uh, consider diverse community perspectives. Uh, each team will be composed about 12 to 15 parents, students, staff, and community members, and will meet at least three times per year, uh, for about 90 minutes to discuss ideas and offer, uh, cumulative guidance within that pillar. And so, uh, this is a start to that implementation of the strategic plan. We're really excited to have those advisory teams up and running. Um, I checked on the numbers. We already have 40 people, um, that have submitted names and we just got that out yesterday. So, uh, we're hopeful that we'll have lots of interest in those advisory teams and we'll announce those soon. So, that concludes my superintendent report for this evening and happy to answer any questions for the board.
Thank you, Dr. Minert. Is there any questions from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I do have a couple here. Um, one, uh, thanks for being very proactive on sending out resources to, uh, parents, especially impacted, those who are impacted by the government shutdown. Um, but I did have a question, uh, uh, especially since we've had this, uh, some questions at the beginning of this year from our community over the meal, uh, charge plans. And I'm assuming that, uh, families who might get caught, uh, in that cash flow, that, uh, just principals locally will work one-on-one with circumstances and, and that policy will, as we've talked before, is adjustable according to those conversations?
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the things we've discussed internally, some flexibility around that as, um, our family, or as our families and our community, uh, heads into this challenging time. So, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other one is, again, want to say thank you for being proactive in our district, being one of the many in the state, um, signing on to the letter to the congressional delegation about, uh, proposed, um, or actual, we don't really know, H1B, uh, requirements. Given the number of, uh, staff that we depend on and who have come to enrich our communities in our schools and students, uh, from different countries under that program. And I believe also under J1, we have some under both, but right now, H1B. Um, so I, I think, uh, that importance that we be proactive in that and, uh, so that they know they have our support as well. So. And, um, just on the sped question that came up tonight, but it's one that we've talked about through the chair. Perhaps encouraging that, um, that might be something to consider. Um, I know we've had a, um, it's not new where we're having a shortage of staff, uh, in those positions, uh, both support staff and teachers. Um, but also, um, as they've been transitioning some of the paperwork to a new platform, that's always a major, uh, adjustment. Um, and, uh, that it's being phased in, which is good, but that might be something that the, I might encourage the administration to take, take a look at perhaps getting a group together too, and then perhaps getting us back to the board informationally. But I think that's more of a administrative area, but I would encourage that. And then one more, last one.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Okay. Um, just, I think you mentioned this earlier, um, both you and Ms. Burnett, that we're scheduled to get a report from, uh, ABM on the custodial program coming up.
Yeah, that's correct. At the next meeting, October 21st. Yeah. They'll be in town on the 15th. We'll be walking through some schools and I'll be, um, having some conversations with their upper level, upper level leadership. And then they'll be here in front of the board on October 21st. Uh, district administration will be providing a report and then ABM will also be here to answer questions from the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Ms. Julian?
Um, thank you so much. I just want to, through the, through the chair to the administration, um, I really, um, want to just thank you for, for the communications that you did. So, Mr. Doran already had mentioned it, but for the families who are impacted by the, um, by the federal government shutdown. Um, so thank you so much in your proactive approach to that. And, um, as we look towards, um, from the testimony tonight, uh, in our advisory board members about the October 15th, um, potential missed, um, paycheck day for families, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can do a little bit more proactive outreach to help make sure that those families feel supported and those students feel, um, safe and welcomed and, and very little disruption.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Anything further from any board members?
Seeing nothing, thank you, Dr. Minert, for sharing your report with us tonight. Moving on, we will jump into our information and reports with Resolution 2026-08. Support for Lights On After School. If you wonder why board members are wearing some flashy things tonight. 21st Century Community Learning Centers, 21st CCLC, after-school programs has been celebrating Lights On with communities across the nation for over 20 years. Lights On After School is a national and local celebration of after-school programs on October 23rd, 2025, that promotes the critical importance of quality after-school and summer learning programs in the lives of our children, their families, and our communities. This event is sponsored by the After School Alliance and draws attention to the programs available as well as the need for more programs. This resolution calls on leaders of the district and community to build awareness of the need for students to have access to a safe, friendly place at school where the lights are on both after-school and during the summer, and to support Lights On After School. Resolution 2026-08, Support for Lights On After School will be read by Director of 21st Century Community Learning Centers After School Programs, Lindsay Weaver, and After School Program Development Coordinator, Jennifer Wink.
Good evening, ladies. It is great to see you again. Support for Lights On After School. Whereas, the members of the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education stand firmly committed to the school district's 21st Century Community Learning Centers Quality After School and Summer Learning Programs because these programs are key in assisting our students become successful adults by providing a safe, challenging, and engaging learning experience for our students to develop their social, emotional, physical, critical thinking, and academic skills. Developing skills for academic and personal improvement and success among our youth. Supporting working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends. Supporting families in becoming more effective partners in their children's education and Building stronger communities by involving students, families, business leaders, community organizations, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults and Whereas, our 21st Century Community Learning Center programs have provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults and Whereas, Lights On After School is a national celebration of after-school programs on October 23rd, 2025, that promotes the critical importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of our children, their families, and our communities and Whereas, many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortballs so severe they are forced to close their doors. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education enthusiastically supports Lights On After School and commits to support innovative after-school and summer programs that will help close the achievement gap and prepare children for their future by ensuring programming is delivered to 21st CCLC grant-funded sites where the lights stay on and the doors stay open for students after school. And be it further resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education does hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2025 as Lights On After School Day in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District, and calls on the leaders of the school district and the Fairbanks North Star Borough to bring awareness to the need for students to have access to safe, friendly place where their lights are on after school and during the summer, and to support 21st Century Community Learning Centers After School Programs. Thank you, ladies.
Up next, we will have our Resolution 2026-09, Honoring Veterans Day. Resolution 2026-09 recognizes Veterans Day on the 11th day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community partners to honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and community. Mr. Doran, would you please read Resolution 2026-09?
With pleasure. Resolution 2026-09, Honoring Veterans Day. Whereas, the United States of America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all. And whereas, America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to advance our national interests, and to preserve our rights and freedoms. And whereas, on Veterans Day, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces, past and present, who have valiantly defended these values throughout our nation's history. And whereas, serving as educators, support staff, board members, parents, and in other important capacities, these patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serves as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. And whereas, on Veterans Day, we also remember and pay tribute to the millions of patriots whose courage and sacrifice have defended and secured our freedom around the globe. And whereas, we honor all men and women currently serving in the military for their sacrifices. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education recognizes Veterans Day on the 11th day of November and calls for educators, students, parents, and community partners to honor it and the special men and women who have served our country with lessons, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and other activities throughout the district and community.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Next up is Resolution 2026-10, Honoring Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month. Resolution 2026-10 proclaims November 2025, Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month, and encourages staff, students, and parents to honor it through interactive research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, cultural celebrations, and potlatches throughout the year. Mr. Burgess, would you please read Resolution 2026-10?
I would be honored. Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education, Resolution 2026-10, Honoring Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas, Alaska natives were the original inhabitants of the land that now constitutes the Fairbanks North Star Borough. And whereas, Alaska natives value and respect traditional knowledge and skills as well as classroom education. And whereas, students of Alaska Native and American Indian heritage are a significant population of the Nor, Fairbanks North Star Borough School District student body. And whereas, Alaska Native and American Indian parents, guardians, and families are engaged in their students' education. And whereas, teachers of Alaska Native and American Indian heritage distinguish themselves as educators in Fairbanks North Star Borough School District classrooms. And whereas, principals and administrators of Alaska Native and American Indian heritage lead their schools and the district with vision. And whereas, Alaska natives and American Indians have served the school board with distinction. And whereas, Alaska Native and American Indian paraprofessional and classified staff support all students' learning success. And whereas, November is the time we traditionally give thanks for the abundance of our blessings. It is an important time to celebrate the historic and concurrent role Alaska natives and American Indians have contributed to our nation, state, borough, and school district. And whereas, incorporating native ways of knowing and the Alaska cultural standards into the curriculum and teaching the contributions of native history, culture, society, and language in the classroom promotes academic success for native students and increases the understanding of all students. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims November 2025, Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month, and encourages staff, students, and parents to honor it through interactive research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, cultural celebrations, and potlatches throughout the year.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Next up is Resolution 2026-11, Recognizing American Education Week. Resolution 2026-11 proclaims the week of November 17th through 21st, 2025 as American Education Week, providing the opportunity to recognize public education and honor the team of people who work in our public schools. Everyone from the bus driver, custodian, and classroom teacher, to the nutrition services worker, teacher aide, administrative staff, and countless others who are making a difference in ensuring every student receives a quality education. in ensuring every student receives a quality education. Ms. Carol Hubbard, would you please read Resolution 2026-11?
Yes. Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education, Resolution 2026-11, Recognizing American Education Week. Whereas, public education in Fairbanks dates from 1904, and whereas, a strong system of public education has created opportunity for generations of citizens to recognize their abilities and realize their potential. And whereas, American Education Week presents the citizens of interior Alaska with a wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives an excellent and equitable education. And whereas, public support of education is as important today as it was in 1919, when American Education Week was first established. And whereas, many influential organizations, including the National Education Association, the Parent Teacher Association, the American Association of School Boards, and the U.S. Department of Education lend their support to this recognition. And whereas, a National Education Week is for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. And whereas, the educators, parents, and community partners who guide our children through the many milestones of learning deserve our highest admiration, respect, and support for investing in young people's futures. And whereas, we all have a stake in public education, and we all have a role to play. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims the week of November 17th through 21st, 2025, in recognition of American Education Week, providing the opportunity to recognize public education and honor the team of people who work in our public schools. Everyone from the bus driver, custodian, and classroom teacher to the nutrition services worker, teacher aide, administrative staff, and countless others who are making a difference in ensuring every student receives a quality education.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Moving on into our action items for the evening, that'll bring us to Article 6 Instruction, BP 6000 through BP 6159.3, first reading. The first half of Article 6 Instruction, Board Policy 6000 through Board Policy 6159.3 is proposed to be revised and is before the Board for first reading by administration. These will replace policies from our Chapter 9 Curriculum Section. Good evening, Ms. Dillard. How are you?
I'm great, thank you. You just took my whole opening, so we're ready to go. This is perfect.
Well, you know, it's in the agenda. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. So yes, this first half of Article 6 has been reviewed and edited with the school board. Can you not hear me? Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Through a couple of work sessions, the current policy packet does include a few recommended edits from Ms. Doolian that came after the work session, so we made those visible. And then after this packet was completed for the agenda, I received some edits, recommendations from Mr. Doran. So we'll be able to see those on the screen tonight. But I think I'm just gonna let you all take the lead on questions and comments to get this started. And I think naturally we'll hit on those policies that we need to look at, and if we don't, then I'll bring them up at the end. That's okay with you?
Yeah, fantastic. So we'll just start here at the top and work our way through then. So, back to the Board. Do we have any questions on what is in front of us, which is BP 6000 Concepts and Roles? Seeing none. Oh. Dr. Minot?
Not necessarily a question, but I think Ms. Dillard was hoping to open up the floor just for the entire article and not going necessarily policy by policy. We could certainly do that, but given that we've gone through a couple of work sessions already with it, might be more efficient use of our time.
Okay, fantastic. Ms. Doolian?
Okay, would you like me to speak to the first? I will speak through the chair. I will speak to the first recommendation I had. Okay, so I'm, under BP 6115, Ceremonies and Observations Patriotic Expression, I thought that it was just, I didn't feel like we captured exactly what we had talked about at our meeting. And so what I did is I just took the, the recommendation that I have is that we just use the language that is exactly in the Alaska statute and list it there, which it's just a minor differences there. But the recommendation that I have is a person may recite the salute to the flag of the United States or maintain a respectful silence, and that mirrors exactly what Alaska statute has in it.
Mr. Doran?
I'm strongly in support of that. I think it's clear. And as a principal, that was when the state changed its law requiring this, that was basically how we approached it.
Okay. The Board pretty much is in agreeance there? Perfect. Mr. Doran?
Okay, the same 166115, the paragraph that's highlighted there, lowering the flag in commemoration. I just have a grammatical edit to that.
Okay.
As written, I'm sorry.
Ms. Dillard?
If I can. I did go ahead, because it was just some sentence structure changes. I just went ahead and made those changes, Mr. Doran, and then highlighted it so we could look at it and make sure it's okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
So then those are Mr. Doran's changes?
That's correct.
Perfect, okay.
It just changed the structure. It left all the words the same, just a little punctuation change.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Doran. Any other suggestions or changes from the Board? Ms. Doolian? No? Okay. Yeah, Ms. Doolian?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Okay, I'll move to BP 6151 Class Size. The recommendation that I have here, and I'll read it for those who are listening, is implementation. It's, this is about House Bill 57 and the new state targets, target average class size that may not exceed the following. And those targets are now pre-kindergarten through grade six at 23 students, and grade seven through grade 12 at 37, I'm sorry, at 30 students. Those are not different from what is listed in the policy. However, I listed here, which is underlined, and I will read what I'd like to add into this. And the reasoning for this is because understandably, this is a, I would call this one of the unfunded mandates from the state, and I'd like us to have some some ability to to help leverage this in our advocacy. So, implementation of these targets is contingent upon the availability of sufficient funding and resources. The district will make reasonable efforts to meet the class size targets outlined above. However, actual class sizes may vary based on budgetary constraints, staffing availability, and facility capacity. I sent this, sent this in with also the request and through the chair to the administration that this was also reviewed by legal, because of course, this is policy regarding state statute. So, that is the reasoning for this edit.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Doolian. Discussion on this edit, Mr. Doran?
I'm in support of the edit, adding that paragraph. What's reflected on the screen right now is an edit that I suggest should be moved up one spot, so it's immediately after the targets. And part of why I support this, and perhaps through the chair, Dr. Minot can confirm for me, that I think that addition that Ms. Doolian added is very consistent with state law, because the statute actually indicates that if we don't meet those targets, the district just needs to explain why and how they're trying to get there perhaps eventually. So I think the addition was very good.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's correct.
Okay. And just in reference to the legal opinion, this was good and everything was?
Yes, just as Mr. Doran said, that falls in line with the plan or kind of the statement that I would make on behalf of the district to say how we're trying our best to meet these target class sizes.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. And the Board is in agreeance with this change? Okay, seeing yeses all around. Okay?
Okay.
Ms. Doolian?
Yes, thank you. I had another one. Okay, BP 6154 Homework. And this policy here, this was something that I, in review of Article 6, especially around homework. I was, as a parent, I was reflecting on this policy in general, because I view homework probably in a different light than my children, which is I view this as a positive thing. Our policy, though, had a lot of negative language around homework. And so my recommendation, that I felt like was a little bit redundant. And this, I would like to strike this specific sentence, which is excessive homework can place undue stress on students and families, leading to burnout, and in some cases, a diminished love of learning. The reason for that strike is because, I'm gonna read the next sentence. I feel like this next sentence really captures the essence of what's trying to be said in that first one, which is this would stay in, to ensure that homework does not place an undue burden on families. Assignments should take into account student time, access to supplies and technology, grade level, and developmental needs. Any work with high academic value should be completed in class with classroom support. And that is my amendment.
Mr. Doran?
Okay, I think this is a good adjustment. I don't have anything to add in other areas of it, but I do think that the suggestion to delete that sentence, excessive is a pretty judgmental word. And again, having dealt with that as a principal, I'm very supportive of this. And because the important thing is that next sentence that Ms. Doolian highlighted, that you, it should be done cognizant and mindful of the family and the individual student and stuff. So I think it's a good edit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doran. So, in regards to how we should move forward with this, I feel like this is more of an amendment than it is, these other edits came out of the work session, and so were put in, and the Board was in agreeance with those. But this would be an amendment. And so we do not have a current motion on the floor. And while we, if we have consensus, we don't necessarily need to take a vote, but I would like to have the motion if we're going to be having amendments. So.
Thank you. I would like to move to amend BP
Hold on. Need to put the original motion on the floor first.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay, move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to a second reading, and vote of the, and vote of the first half of Article 6 Instruction, BP 6000 through BP 6159.3.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will open this up for public testimony. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward and testify on Article 6? Seeing no testimony, public testimony is now closed. We will come back to the Board. So Ms. Doolian, your proposal is to amend this by taking that sentence out, correct?
Correct. Would you like me to?
Is there any dissension among the Board for that? Is there, are we kind of in consensus? I think then we can go ahead and make that change. So. Go ahead and make the motion, yeah.
Um, hold on, let me get back here. I move to amend BP, Article 6 Instructions, BP 6000 through BP 6159.3, specifically BP 6154 Homework, by removing the sentence, excessive homework can place undue stress on students and families, leading to burnout, and in some cases, a diminished love of learning.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there anybody who disagrees with this? Seeing none? Okay, we can go ahead and accept that change. I don't think we should need to vote if we're all in consensus. Say that, Mr. Burgess? Without objection, sorry, yeah, sorry. So without objection, that is taken. Okay, next suggestion? Mr. Doran?
And I have three pretty short ones. So I'll do them as amendments, because they're substance.
Okay. Talking to your microphone.
Okay, on BP 6020, okay, which is parent guardian involvement. So I'm gonna move on the, for a word change, under parent guardian involvement in classroom teacher assignment. It's the bottom of page four. To change that, to read, parents guardians may submit recommendations to the teacher striking building administrator concerning their student's classroom teacher assignment. And following next sentence, the building administrator will consider parent guardian recommendations, et cetera. So there are two changes. In the first line, teacher replacing building administrator. In the second line, at the end, saying will consider versus assess. Okay.
Mr. Doran, would you speak to your amendment here?
Right, because the reason, the first one is a teacher rather than the building administrator. It's a classroom assignment, it's the teacher assignment. And that's where that conversation, and I've watched it happen many, many, many times, where the parent has given suggestions, feedback, recommendations regarding their child to the teacher, and the teacher is able to do that. So that is, that first sentence is really talking about the classroom and the teacher. So that consistency and where it should be. The second one is certainly if there's a concern that the teacher's non-responsive or such, I mean, could go to the administrator. But also, where the building administrator becomes really important in the parent input is they do the class placement. And so, as a principal, I've regularly got recommendations, information from the parents that helped in making that placement decision. So there's a real distinction there, but that parent involvement is equally important. So that's the reason for the two changes.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Ms. Dillard, yeah, I was just going to ask.
Thank you. So we did discuss this, and what this piece of this policy is trying to capture and address is when, say, a parent says, I want my student to have this teacher next fall for the start of fourth grade. So it's placement in a classroom with a teacher, or potentially maybe mid-class at any grade. A parent might say, I don't want my student to be with that teacher anymore because of whatever reason, I want my student to be moved. So that's what we're capturing here with classroom and teacher assignment. So we think it would be most appropriate for the parent to be making that request directly to the building administrator. And that's aligned with our negotiated agreement as far as the building administrator having the ultimate authority to decide class placement.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Mr. Doran?
Okay.
Oh, Dr. Minot? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Okay. Then that changes that whole section completely. Because it's not, I mean, the confusion of assignment versus placement. And if it's placement, then the way it's written, I am, originally written, I am comfortable with. But then the title needs to be changed to say placement, because that would, because that's, if I'm confused, as an experienced educator on this, the parents would be confused. And if it's an assignment in the classroom, I see where their confusion comes, but so I would see. I'm just thinking procedurally how to do this. If I could amend the amendment? I'm just thinking procedurally how to do this. Um, if I could amend the amendment.
Okay.
Or we would, I would ask that we vote down the um, no, okay, the way, yeah, that we vote down the current amendment with the understanding that I will be making amendment to change the title to placement rather than assignment. That it's assignment, it's placement rather than assignment in those places. Okay, so I'm going to encourage us to vote down the current amendment, and now I'll be making it up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doran. So with that, anybody have any further discussion or ready to call the vote to? Recommendation by Mr. Doran would be to vote this down. Okay. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on Mr. Doran's amendment? Which was originally to have, go ahead, Mr. Doran.
That was originally in line one to change building administrator to teacher, and at the end of line two, to change assess to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. A yes vote will obviously have this pass. A no vote knocks it down. Ms. Richardson, please call the vote.
Can you tell me who seconded that? I didn't hear.
Uh, Mr. Burgess.
Okay. Colonel Foster?
No.
Colonel Campbell?
No.
Ms. Charlie?
No.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Burgess?
No.
Ms. Dullian?
No.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
No.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Ms. Maple?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
No.
Thank you, motion failed.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you for voting down my amendment. And in the spirit of clarity, I now move to amend um, by uh, replacing the word as assignment with the word placement, and that'll be in three spots in that section.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, if you would like to speak to it again, you can, but I think that we have.
I think it's, we've done it.
Okay. Is there any objection to this amendment? So without objection, we will go ahead and make that change. Thank you, Mr. Doran.
And thanks for the clarity.
Anything further, Mr. Doran?
Uh, yes. Um, BP sixty-one forty-five twenty-two concussion in student athletes. I move to uh, change the, a word in the second paragraph, second line towards the end, changing the wo- where it says causing any change in behavior. My motion is to change the word any to a singular change in behavior.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Doran, would you please speak to that?
Okay, any is um, really broad and very encompassing. Um, and there can be a change in behavior that has nothing to do with the um, concussion. Uh, but I do think that um, uh, changing it to a change, it's still broad, but it gives a little bit more implies a little bit more of relationship to the uh, traumatic injury, the concussion itself. Um, so I think it's a um, it is a um, a more appropriate wording. Um, because uh, there, there may be multiple changes, but you're really looking for the changes that are affected by the concussion and that need to, the student needs to be supported through, so.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. I'm gonna throw myself in on that and actually disagree with that respectfully. Um, in concussion protocol for sports, this is actually the language, they are looking for any change in behavior. So um, ice hockey, for example, if a kid gets knocked into the post, anything, it, it's not a change, it's any change. Anything that that kid is doing that wasn't exactly the same before will, is cause for concern to pull them off the field, off the ice, off the court. Um, and so I would highly suggest that we keep the word any in there as it is very broad because that, that is what concussion protocol is. It's any change in behavior. Ms. Dillard, would you have anything to add into that? Would you agree, disagree?
Um, I mean, I think I prefer, for the reasons, I think that for the reasons that you just mentioned, any, it's important to have this capturing um, all possible changes. This policy was, um, we did get advice from traumatic brain injury specialists in, in finalizing this policy. I think a change could also capture just about anything, so um, I don't have a strong opinion either way, but I think any was what we originally intended.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dillard. Anything from the board on this? Seeing none? Okay, um, so what we'll do with this is we'll go ahead and call this one to a vote. Um, so if you agree to change it to a, the vote is yes. If you want to keep it at any, then the vote is no. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote on this amendment?
Mr. Wade?
No.
Colonel Foster?
No.
Colonel Campbell?
No.
Ms. Charlie?
No.
Ms. Maple?
No.
Mr. Burgess?
No.
Ms. Dullian?
No.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
No.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
No.
Thank you, motion failed.
Thank you. Anything further or new changes from the board? Mr. Doran?
Okay, I have one, and before I make amendment um, to the chair, I'd like to ask to the administration. Um, my concern is on word policy sixty-one forty-six point five differential requirements for individuals exceptional needs the section under standardized assessment. Um, the first paragraph um, is clear and it's, you know, as required by law, which means that students may or may not take the test and then there are provisions. My concern is in the first sentence of the second paragraph where it simply states students with the com- with disabilities must take all statewide standards-based tests. Um, before I amend suggestion amendment, actually, I would like some feedback from administration. Um, on one hand, we're doing it in court with state law, which is optional. But now we're saying they must take it. Um, and so they are in conflict with each other. But if I read it with the idea that if they take the test, then they must do it with or without accommodations, you know, and, and the other conditions that, that are appropriate under that. But it's really an if they take the test situation, and so I, um, asking for better clarification and perhaps some suggestion on how that may or may not be amended.
Yeah, I think I'd concur with your statement. I mean, given the, that Alaska has a broad out, opt-out policy for assessments in general. Um, it's not a must, but I think the intent is getting at that there is an alternative assessment available for some special education students that meet strict requirements. And so I can see that there may be um, some room for a language change in that paragraph. Not sure I have a recommendation right off the top of my head to clean that up.
Perhaps a suggestion, if the board also feels that might be with administration, maybe there is a way of clarifying that a little bit better rather than wordsmith it tonight, that I would make amendment to remove this policy for, for the, for future consideration, so that it could be done and brought back with the rest of six, the six thousands. That might be a clean way to do it, but.
Dr. Minat, um, just your advice with that, um, or maybe that would be to Ms. Dillard, um.
I'll take it.
Okay.
Um, so are you suggesting pulling this policy from first reading this evening or passing it in first reading and then allowing us to go back and uh, make changes to it? I guess it would be my recommendation to the board to pass it on, and then we could bring um, changes to the next uh, board meeting, and if you have some ideas, in the meantime, we can work those into this policy.
Yeah, I, I would be comfortable with that. Um, and that, but, uh, because I don't want to get down to a wordsmithing tonight unless we had something that quickly moved in. And since I didn't, I can't put it on your shoulders, so.
I appreciate that.
What, Mr. Doran? Fantastic, then that's what we can do. Um, we'll go ahead and um, reassess this in second reading. Anything further or new for changes from the board on the six thousands, Article Six? I'm gonna do one last look. Anything further? Seeing none? All right, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on Article Six, the first half of Article Six?
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs., Ms. Dullian?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
And for the record, I'd like to state that that was approved as amended. I forgot to say that when we went into the first approval. So for the record, that was approved as amended. That will bring us to the end, Mr. Doran.
Could I just say great kudos to Ms. Dillard and to the administration? I mean, this uh, policy reviews and updates are really a heavy lift. I know we've mentioned it before, but I think it is well deserved uh, to bring this forward in a uh, manageable uh, way, and uh, just great kudos.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Dillard, and thank you to administration. That will bring us to our board and superintendent comments to wrap up the evening. We will start down here with Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say uh, that uh, this is, this, this week, right now, October fifth through eleventh of twenty-twenty-five is banned book week. Banned books week. Um, banned books week was launched in nineteen eighty-two in response to a sudden surge in the number of challenges to books in uh, libraries and bookstores and schools. Uh, and we're seeing, you know, a similar resurgence in the past several years. Um, it's uh, it's held annually either the last week of September or first week of October, and highlights the value of free and open access to information, bringing together uh, book, the, the book community or book enthusiasts, including librarians, educators, authors, uh, publishers and so forth. Um, and the theme of this year's uh, banned books week is censorship is so nineteen eighty-four. Read for your rights. Um, so I just, I just uh, think that it's really important to um, highlight the uh, the importance of literature and, and what it can bring to um, our students and adults, um, and our community. The uh, ideas that it can instill, the sense of empathy that it, that uh, it can bring forward. Um, and the understanding of people who are different than us. Um, uh, books that deal with um, topics such as censorship, such as um, institutional racism, um, uh, gender and sexuality. Um, any of these kinds of books are, are often targets of bans. Um, and uh, I think um, it's just very important to recognize that uh, these topics, though they may be challenging, though um, people may disagree with some of the content in, in, in books like that, it's really important to understand um, for one, the entire context of any piece of literature that you read rather than excerpting quotes. Um, uh, and it's, I just want to emphasize that um, that books really are a window into growth for us. They, they allow us to understand each other, uh, understand different situations, to imagine different scenarios where we can, you know, work out um, philosophical questions, um, uh, questions around who we are as people, um, and where we can really just hear different ideas and stimulate our brains. It's really important, um, so anytime I hear about a, a book that is banned or being targeted, um, I go out and buy it. I have a huge stack at home. I have my own little banned book library. Um, and uh, honestly, I don't know when I'm gonna get to all of them, so feel free to reach out and borrow a banned book from Bobby Burgess. Um, but uh, uh, yeah, um, so, and I would encourage everybody else, go and read some books. Go and get out of your, break out of your comfort zone, read the whole thing and try to understand what the author is really saying um, when uh, uh, with a piece of literature. Um, so happy banned books week, and uh, that's all I've got tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Ms. Maple?
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Jumping down here with Ms. uh, Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. Recently, Mrs. Dullian and I went to Wood River Elementary for a school visit, and we started our visit in the front office. Hang on, I gotta take my glasses off, I can't read. We started our visit in the front office greeted by enthusiastic and friendly staff who made us feel welcome and at home upon our arrival. We met many teachers and students, and the energy and focus in this school, Wood River, is outstanding. We observed reading lessons, math lessons, and enjoyed watching everyone so hard at work. We felt extremely proud to be witnessing the educational excellence happening in our schools. The many seasoned teachers at Wood River create a climate of success across the whole school. And the newer teachers have fabulous built-in mentors to help them set their rhythm and build relationships quickly. We were so impressed by the work happening even in a couple of larger classes. Classroom management seems to be second nature, as the students are on task and the buzzing of learning was great to hear and to observe. It was a really fun experience and a joy to share with everyone, but it is hard to explain the level because the level activity, um, we felt was really an indication that meaningful learning was taking place and that students are at home. They are happy and thriving at Wood River Elementary, so thank you to Wood River. Um, for the month of October, I received a lineup of STEAM activities uh, from all around the community. And um, I wanted to share with everyone that the STEAM Ahead program at Anderson Crawford, Hunter, North Pole Elementary, and North Pole Middle Schools are gearing up for a great month. They are hosting science clubs and career connections as teachers just finish a professional development opportunity, getting engaged in STEAM-based activities, preparing teachers to lead students in exciting, hands-on learning experiences that fuel curiosity and build engineering skills. All around the community, actually, there will be art, music, robotic events, health, history, mystery, and even a poetry slam, um, animals, smart energy, and Skype a scientist. If anyone is interested in getting involved or in participating in these events, um, you can find more information by reading your school newsletter and following the district on social media.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Ms. Dullian?
All right, um, I first want to thank the Pearl Creek APC yesterday. They presented their um, their charter to us, and I want to thank all of the the families and the volunteers who are a part of that uh, charter application and for showing up, and for the educators and, and advocates who were there. I um, I also want to thank them for fielding a lot of our, our very penetrating, um, I'm gonna use Mr. Cross's uh, words, penetrating questions um, to really dive into the details and, and, and figure out um, just some, some different path, paths forward uh, around the data that was presented. So I thank them for their time. And Wood River, we had a really great visit. Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard, for capturing that. I want to just do one shout out to Mr. Kinder's classroom. When we showed up in Mr. Kinder's classroom, a student walked up to us and said, hi, I'm the class ambassador. And we were like, wow, this is great. Since then, I've talked to a few different parents who have students and guardians who have students in Mr. Kinder's classroom. And what I learned is that he has a Wacky Wednesday, every Wednesday, where they do really fun engaging STEM activities. A couple of weeks ago, they launched smart water bottle rockets. And just this week, they made shrunken heads. Isn't that cool? If I was a kid in that class, I'd want to go to school every day. Right on, Mr. Kinder. Okay, number two, I've, Melissa was, or Ms. President Burnett was making fun of me because of my excessive note-taking. So here we go. I want to, I also want to make a little shout out to Ms. Dooster at LAD. I made a mistake. I had listed that I was coming to your classroom tomorrow and I just realized that I'm supposed, and I was supposed to be there yesterday. So I want to say publicly on record that I am not perfect and I made a mistake and I sent you an email and I hope that I can come tomorrow. So send me a text. Friday also works. Number three, I want to thank our students who came tonight to testify and also the amazing presentation that we had from a fourth grade student. Holy cow, I was crying. I bet our few people in the audience were still crying. I even bet some of our officers might have had a little tear. I'm not doubting it. But I want to read something here. This is what he said, and I think that this is so powerful. This is what this, this fourth grader said. He is kind to everyone in our school. That's what Asher said, our U Park student who was speaking about his custodian, Mr. Joseph. He is kind to everyone in our school. That's all that matters, right? When a child walks into school and when they see somebody who's kind to them, regardless of who that child is, that's the most amazing thing. Because when a child feels like somebody, an adult, is being kind to them and welcoming them in school and that they belong, that's when learning can start to happen. And so let's take that with us, folks, and try to be kind to everyone. I also want to thank Chala Alexander, who came so bravely to talk about middle school basketball and her wishes to extend the season. Thank you, thank you for also being brave and bringing that important topic forward. And I'm going to do another shout out to another amazing group of students. Hutch High School Building Trades has built a little free library and donated it to Hunter Elementary. And the impetus for this started last year during the school closure. Several of these students from Hutch High School were Pearl Creek puffins. And they were listening very closely during those school closure conversations. And the testimony from Hunter Elementary teachers and parents moved this group of students to make a little free library in their building trades class at Hutch High School and donate it to Hunter Elementary. And so that group of students went and they took a picture with the principal. And now they have a little free library right outside the library in Hunter Elementary. So I'm going to go back to the wise words of Asher. He is kind to everyone in our school. Doesn't that make your heart just explode like the Grinch, it grows a couple sizes? That's what we need to bring forward. So I'm just so proud, I'm so proud of our students and I'm so proud of our educators. And then to shift, just to shift just a little bit, I want to thank everyone from our SPED community for writing to us, for testifying, for letting us know that you are feeling the pressure. The pressure from budget cuts, the pressure from short staffings, from vacancies. And I just want to know that you are being heard, we hear you, and we are going to try to, we are going to find a way forward for you. You are not alone, but thank you for speaking up and you have been heard. And then finally, in looking at, at something that I feel is going to hit our district pretty hard in the next couple of years, we have a wave of tier-two retirees, educators in our district who are tier-two retirees that will qualify for retirement in the next five years. Eighty percent of our employees are tier-three. And tier-three employees have far fewer benefits and incentives to stay as tier-two. So I'm very concerned about the vacancies and educator recruitment and retention. And I just want to let the public know that I hope to, that we as a board can find some ways that we could potentially help our tier-two, I'm sorry, our tier-three employees. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dullian, Mr. Doran?
Okay, thank you. Several things for any educators who are listening. Tomorrow is Educators Night at the University of Alaska Museum of the North from four to six. And would encourage any educators, just want to get another inside look to the museum, but also see the resources that the museum has for teachers in the classroom and for schools. There are lots and lots of things, so I just want to encourage educators to take advantage of that opportunity. That's tomorrow, four to six, at the Museum of the North. I was thrilled when Mr. Wade talked about students in the seats and expressing the hope that we could have a hundred percent of the seats filled by students. And I was thinking, you know, we've come close. It wasn't quite a hundred percent, but every seat was filled. Actually, there was standing room only. And on several occasions that has happened, the one that struck me right away was having students here to testify on school start times. And the place was full. I will say, we wound up, not only those testifying, but we took a quick straw poll. And it was really fifty-fifty whether to move the times later or keep them where they were, et cetera. But you did bring forward the importance of civics in action where we've had students come to testify or to observe the board in action. And so thanks for bringing that to mind because I think it underscores the importance of students being part of their district. This is, October is National Principal Month, and so I want to highlight that. I know they're covered under the umbrella of the American Education Week, that resolution that we passed. But, and we'll include in the spring when we do our educator recognition. But do want to highlight the principals and all the work that they do in our schools. They, it is truly impressive as I go around to visit and chat with them. They're just moving with ideas and care. And as we've talked about on several fronts, kindness, trying to reach out for their staff, their students, their parents. And in that line, as I've been visiting schools in the last week, I've been able to get to about six schools in the past week. One of the things that stood out that when I asked for the three brags, I mean, three brags about your school, every one of them talked about community and the support that they have found within their community, their school community, parents and community members partnering, just stepping up, helping out, pitching in, just being there, just coming with a positivity and trying to say, you know, is there something I can do, something we can do? And it really struck me because each one of those communities, I was out at North, several schools out in the North Pole area and then the military installations and up north, how that consistency came through from place to place to place. And so really want to say a great thank you to the communities in our, in Fairbanks, the borough, so the Fairbanks and North Pole areas, you know, really for what you do for our schools. And that was really a highlight. And that was with principals who've been here a long time, their position, and principals who are brand new to their school. And they all express the same type of thing. And with talking about that community, polls are now closed. I want to like to just really say a big thank you to the four candidates who have run for school board. As Dr. Minor mentioned earlier, you know, throughout our community, people stepping up and running for municipal offices, people who step up and run for state and federal offices to represent us. But I'm just going to focus, because we're a school board, to say thank you to the four candidates. It would have struck me this year, the way you presented yourselves in the various forums to each other. You represent our community well. And I'm kind of mindful of going back to my principal days when I had one position to fill and I had several good candidates. And so I just really want to say thank you to the four of them for what you've done, what you've stepped up, what you give for kids, because what was very, very clear is you all really care about students and you're strong supporters of public education. So thank you, and just know that it's recognized. And whatever turns out, you know, if you don't get it the first time, second time, third time, whatever, come back. So we have good people.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. I just wanted to end tonight with something I forgot to put into my president's report, and so I just wanted to touch on it. Dr. Minor had mentioned ABM's visit coming forward here. Do you believe that's next week? I will also be joining our administration and Dr. Minor on the walks through our schools, talking with ABM and making sure that they are upholding the standards that we want. I know that they haven't met things as we expect, but I do know that all the issues that have come up, they have handled. And so I appreciate the administration bringing them forward to Fairbanks and so that we can do the walkthroughs and make sure that our schools are handling the things that they need to be handling when it comes to our custodial services. On the last note to everyone who took the time to vote today, thank you for showing up and caring about our schools and our community. I wish all the candidates luck. It has been an incredible three years on this board, and I hope we can be here for three more. Thank you. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. We are now adjourned.